The Town of Plainville. Established in 1721 at the geographical center of Connecticut.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to our town council meeting this evening. Today is March 1st, 2018, beginning at 7:00 PM. I would please ask that you stand for the pledge and Councilwoman Tompkins will lead us in it.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. As you can see, the first order of business is the Town Manager's FY 2019 Proposed Budget Presentation. So I'm going to turn the meeting over to Mr. Lee and he will go through what we have to offer.
Thank you very much. By our charter, this is the month of March is when the manager is required to present a budget to the town council. It's historically, or technically, it's called the Town Manager's Recommended Budget. And with that in mind, I would like to start off by saying that my goals for preparing this budget for fiscal year 19, which begins on July 1st and ends in June of 2019, and that's why we call it fiscal year 19, it's usually fiscal year ending 19. But my goals were, by and large, to try as much as possible to maintain the current level of services currently provided to the citizens of Plainville. To continue to pursue opportunities to be more efficient in our delivery of services. Continue to look at the long run. And what I mean by that is resist as much as possible the quick fix that can lead to future financial issues. And last but certainly not least, to be as clear and concise as possible while detailing the whole picture. With that in mind, I'd like to thank in advance, because usually when we get done, it's people are, you know, or forgetting, I guess. But I'd like to thank some staff. This certainly has been a team effort to put together and it really is a product of many hours of work. Particular attention to Scott Colby, the Assistant to the Town Manager, Rob Buden is the Finance Director, Shirley Osley is the Assistant Town Manager, Maureen Brummett is the Superintendent of Schools, Sam Adlerstein as the Director of Business and Operations, and Lisa Mateer, who's the Executive Assistant in my office, who is really the person that holds everything else all together for the most part. Having said that, the proposed budget as recommended, and you have copies of it in front of you, we do have copies of the PowerPoint presentation. If anybody wants a copy of it, we have it up front here. If there's not enough copies that go around, we certainly can make more as well. But the budget as presented was total a little bit over $60 million, which represents an increase of $1.5 million, or 2.62 percent. That's split basically into four categories. The four categories being the Board of Education, Town Government, Capital Improvement, and Debt Service. And this pie chart basically shows that the school operations budget makes up about 60, a little bit more than 62 percent of this budget. Town Government is a little bit under 30 percent. The Debt Service is 7.33 percent, and the Capital Projects 1.33 percent. Our expenditure changes, you know, from those four categories, the Board of Education operating increase is a little bit over $1.8 million, represents 5.13 percent. Town Government is a 1.88 percent increase, $323,000. Debt Service, decrease of $312,000, and Capital Projects, a decrease of $300,000. I would like to point out, and we've been talking about this for the last couple of meetings, that if not for the health insurance rate increases, the overall budget would have been $80,481, or 0.15 percent. So you can see fairly immediately what the impact, at least as far as the budget is concerned, with respect to what's driving the budget going forward, at least on the expenditure side. This is something that we've shown for quite some time. This is our historical expenditure increases. Actual increases are in blue, the proposed increases is in, I don't know, we call that yellow?
Green.
Mustard? Green? Is that green? All right. All right, thanks. It's yellow on my page, by the way. What this basically shows is that the average over the last eight years, and that includes the proposed 2.62 percent, the average over the last eight years is 1.5 percent increase in the budget. That includes the 2.62 percent, average over the last eight years. On the revenue side, we're seeing, and the revenue, at least the intergovernmental revenues are based upon the legislature's approved budget that they did in October, just passed, and they made a two-year budget, and this is their second year fiscal year 19. That's the current legislation that's in place. Certainly, we're aware that the Governor has made some suggestions in his address in February, when the legislature opened up their session, the short session for this year. He is suggesting some changes of which would further reduce state aid to municipalities. We're not using those numbers because that would take the action of the legislature to change it. It's not to say it's not going to happen, and it's certainly something that we're going to closely monitor, you know, as we go forward. But based upon the second year of the legislature's budget that was approved and passed in October, budget to budget, that would mean a decrease to Plainville of $610,000. We did have a slight growth in the grand list. That represents about $195,000 in new revenue based upon the mill rate that was established back in July, or actually, in the end of June. We're proposing to use $300,000 added to Debt Management Fund. I'll explain more about that later. Use of money, which is basically our investments, which return a very meager percentage, but based upon what we get from the banks nowadays, we're anticipating about a $10,000 decrease. Most of that is based upon the fact that our fund balance has dropped somewhat. Fines and fees, we're projecting a slight increase of $15,000. And other transfers and whatnot is minus $6,000. So it's a total revenue that's driving this budget as well, is we're proposing, we're seeing that the, and anticipating that as it stands right now, we'll see a decrease of a little bit over $116,000 on the revenue side. Focusing on the Town General Government Budget, the increase is 1.88 percent. And you can see the general government proposing a slight increase. The two major drivers on the general government side is public safety and employee fringe And I did another pie chart, for those who like pie charts, kind of going out of fashion, but I still like to use them. The, just to show that the, of the $323,000 increase, employee benefits are making up about 48 percent of that increase, public safety making up about 40 percent of that increase, and all of the other categories combined make it up about 12 percent of the Again, the major drivers of the budget being payroll, which is spread among a bunch of departments, employee benefits, liability insurance, and we see, we're seeing, again, a slight decrease in utility costs as we continue to, as we continue to find savings by, you know, some of the changes that we've made, using, you know, more energy-efficient lighting and equipment and whatnot. So, and we see the, you know, the benefits of that each year. I think we're running out of opportunities to do that, but we continue to scour wherever we can to save energy costs as well. So with that in mind, the next section is the Board of Education summary, and Dr. Brummett is going to take the microphone.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. And I'd also like to start off by thanking my very important team of Sam Adlerstein and Steve LaPage, Assistant Superintendent, as well as our collaborative work with Robert Lee, Rob Buden, and Scott Colby, all very much involved in our process and meeting constantly about how to make this all work. So, before every presentation, I always reference the vision statement for the district, and that is our driver, much like the Town Manager mentioned, the goals that he has. Our driver is our vision statement of where we want to head as a school district to benefit students' teaching and learning, and anything that I've put in the budget reflects that vision statement. As the town is aware, we had mid-year cuts to the Education Cost Sharing Grant this year, and that resulted in, overall, about $1.9 million loss to the town. Because of our collaborative relationship, which I'm very appreciative of, we were able to, we were asked to reduce $220,000 out of our budget. So listed there, you see areas that we did reduce to meet that goal. And at the end of this year, our commitment to the town is to return $220,000 to make up for that shortfall. Just as a matter of education, the school district budget is funded by two sources. One is ECS, and one is local town revenues. As everyone is painfully aware, the ECS funding has not been as reliable as it has historically been. And on the next page, you'll see an even more elaborative chart. And unfortunately, it coincides with my first two years as being a superintendent, that ECS money has suddenly become unreliable, with $100,000 cut last year, and of course, that $1.9 million cut this year, representing that big dip toward the very end of that line graph. The question mark remains as to what will happen for next year. But I will say that I've been behind a bill put forth by the Appropriations Committee that seeks to limit the executive branch of the government, otherwise known as the Governor, from receding any money once the budgets have been passed. I would like to see that go forward, so at least we won't have to experience mid-year cuts, as we've been doing for the past two years. So coming out of the gate this year, if nothing had been reduced, we would have had a 2.85 percent budget increase. That reflects another 6 percent increase in health insurance, which was the same increase we had last year. However, as has already been discussed briefly, that health insurance costs quite a bit of adjustments to be made. So on the next slide, you can see, what I believe many folks are already familiar with, is that this year, where we thought we would have approximately eight folks who would have high levels of health insurance claims, it in fact turned out to be 21 folks. And that presented a huge shortfall in this year's budget for the health insurance and has necessitated a very large increase on both the town and the board side. Our portion of that is $1.3 million. And to put that in perspective, last year, our health insurance increase was $220,000. So you can see that this type of increase is unprecedented, but obviously created quite a bit of concern as we were developing our budget. We found out that information after we already had one board budget work session. Just to let the community know, our enrollment is holding pretty steady. In the bar graph in front of you, the blue bar graph indicates what we have had for enrollment, whereas the red bar portion of the bar graph tells you what we thought we would have. So each year, we've exceeded what our projections are, and we anticipate that that is going to hold firm. And on the next page is a little bit more of a difficult chart to read, but as part of the Wheeler Project, we, Mr. Adlerstein, did redo our enrollment projections, taking into, somewhat taking into account that we anticipate enrollment to go up slightly because of our preschool program. But the bottom line is that our trends are that we're either holding firm or experiencing very slight decreases. Okay. On the next slide, I wanted to show the community that we knew this was going to be a very difficult budget year. So, once we heard about the health insurance impact, and my direction to all of my administrators were, if you would like to put anything into that budget for next year, you're going to have to be willing to give something up. So we did a very careful analysis of all of our spending and all of our positions, and coming out of the gate, we did reduce $330,000 worth of positions, and that is listed right on the slide, which includes a tech ed teacher at the high school, a part-time school psychologist at the high school, and a college and career center consultant. We also are not replacing two staff members at the middle school. That's a special ed teacher who's retiring, as well as a literacy tutor. At Lyndon, we're reducing an open choice tutor and a classroom teacher. And one of the cuts that has gotten quite a bit of public attention is the reduction to our wellness program. That's a program where our children get pre-planned breaks throughout the school day, activity breaks. And while it's been a very popular program, it's not a mandate, and it costs about $125,000 to run. We are going to reduce that by eliminating those positions, but we still have some activity breaks, they would just be run by existing staff. That did create quite a bit of parental concern at the board meeting. Going forward into our capital plan, we actually as well made quite a few reductions coming out of the gate. That chart's a little hard to read, but we started off with deciding to postpone repairs to the high school smokestack. That's pushed out till 2020. The high school smokestack is deteriorating, but we keep hoping that we can hold off another year. We're postponing any purchases to district-wide cleaning equipment. We did propose putting an update to our automation system at Lyndon, which would have an impact at several schools. That allows us to remotely adjust energy usage to save further money on energy costs, but that was removed by the Town Manager before he put this capital plan forward. It was approved by the board and then removed. Similarly, we wanted to put in a, what's called a head-end AC unit. It would be put in our high school location, where we have all of our technology infrastructure that would guarantee that everything would stay cool and no damage would happen. We didn't, that was taken out as well when the Town Manager went through our budget line. And we also postponed the removal of underground storage tank at the middle school. We're hoping we can hold that off until the middle school is due for some renovations in about five years. So there's a risk there that the tank could create a leak of some sort, but we're gambling that it will not. So going forward, there are absolutely no facilities monies in our capital plan. We did move forward with technology, and as I believe the community is well aware, we're very invested in keeping our students' one-to-one program moving forward. So our budget recommends that we do replace some Chromebooks. We replace partially the projectors at the high school, which are 10 years old. I'll get into more detail about that in a moment. We also want to do a networking upgrade, but that will benefit not only the Board of Education, but the town, because all of our technology infrastructure is essentially merged. But that would be partially reimbursed by E-rate funding, or half of that would be reimbursable. And then we also wanted to purchase cases for the Chromebooks, because if we're going to make the investment, we want to make sure the kids treat them well and they're safe. So our end proposal for capital after reductions is strictly the technology at $224,900. So we had initially $341,000, the board approved $253,000, and what remains this evening is $224,900. Just putting that in another slide to give you some more explanation. The Chromebooks that we're replacing are from the 2014-15 school year, and we were told when we invested in these, they last about three years, and then they start to fall to disrepair. So those students receive them when they were in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. These children are now high school age, so they would get replacement Chromebooks. We're looking for Chromebooks for grades 6, 10, and 11 next year. There's 550 that we need. The price has come way down since we started, they were close to 300 when we started, now they're 200 per device, so that equals 110,000. And the cases for our sixth graders would run $4,900, and they're very, very high-quality Technology at the high school is 10 years old. It dates back to the renovation there, and the classrooms need these devices to run, you know, in concert with our one-to-one Chromebook program. We, at first, thought we'd replace all of them next year, but in light of the financial challenges, we divided that in half. And the proposal is that we replace them in 35 rooms at the high school, at 2,500 per room, which would equal $87,500. The good news with these new systems is, current systems have a light bulb replacement system, but each light bulb, when it goes out, costs several hundred dollars. These new systems don't have that type of maintenance cost. So in summary, this is our capital technology plan. I think I've discussed the Chromebooks, the network upgrade that is going to benefit town and board, offset by some E-rate funding of $22,500, Chromebook cases, and the projectors, half of the projectors needed at the high school. I'd also like to summarize what we had hoped to do through program enhancements this year. We're going to continue our preschool program, full week, full day, but we are going to increase the parent fees, essentially doubling them. The number of children attending preschool this year exceeds the number of children in kindergarten by over 20 students. So it's a very popular program, but we realize to keep it going, we need to keep those parent fees a little bit higher than they were this year. We had proposed a school resource officer in our original budget. It was going to be paid by an in-kind service, offset by the technology offset that the town provides for us. Currently, that is not in the budget. That was something that was not funded in the board's budget. We did get approval for an additional math teacher at the high school. There's been new requirements for high school math. Now incoming freshmen have to take four years of math, so we needed an extra math teacher to make that happen, as well as a new college prep math course that we would like to offer. We will be delving into a Go Kid Go program, which will help, allow our high school students to help design adaptations to the numerous kids in our district who have wheelchairs, and it's sort of an innovative project that allows the children to do real-world problem-solving. However, there will be no board expense there. We're going to seek grant funds for the materials required to do that program. The other thing that did not make it to the final board budget is an indoor track team. We did have some parent pushback on that at the last board meeting, but we, it did remain out of the budget. So finally, reconciling what our budget looks like, we looked at various options during our final deliberations, but what finally went through was option C, which is then on the right-hand side of the slide, an increase of, the dollar increase for actually the operating budget was $493,000, or 1.39 percent, which is one of the lower increases over recent years. However, as had stated previously, the health insurance impact is significant this year at $1.3 million. So you can see a 1.39 percent budget increase jumps to 5.13 percent when you add in that health insurance. So the board's final approved budget for this year is $37,322,000. And just one pitch for the school district, I always like to end on a positive note. Our children, I want the taxpayers to know their dollars go to very solid outcomes. And on the next slide, you'll see that our high school seniors are leaving our high school having done 5,000 hours of community service. They've earned 1,100 college credits, which is saving their parents over $1 million in avoided tuition costs. 65 graduates take at least one or more AP courses, and our children are earning $2,000, $200,000 worth of local scholarships, and that doesn't take into account what they're getting from their institutions. This is just local scholarships. Our children also, 84 percent of them go on to a higher ed program, 99 percent of them leave high school with a solid plan, and 72 percent of our children get accepted into their first-choice college or trade school. So our children are leaving here very successful. And I believe I am going to turn this back over to Mr. Lee.
Thank you very much. I would like to point out just a couple of things on the health insurance line items. It is a major, has a major impact to this year's budget. One, there seems to be a little bit of a misperception with regards to the operation of the health, the self-insurance budget. It is a town-operated health insurance that we provide to the employees. It's not an employee-driven, you know, it's not an employee-managed or owned health insurance plan. It's a plan that's, that is, the town provides to its employees. So I want to make that clear, that that's the situation. The second thing is that we use a consultant, Lockton, to give us advice with regards to what they are recommending our rates would be for the next year. And they've, if we, we budgeted half of what their increase, what they've recommended is an increase. So if we budgeted the full amount that they recommended, the increase on the health insurance side would actually be close to twice as much as where it stands right now. The reason why we did that is because we're currently looking at joining a state plan, which is kind of a, it's a consolidation. It's a plan that's offered by the state to municipalities, and based upon the rate that they're currently charging to get into the program. And the program is a blended rate, it's not based upon our experience, it's based on the experience of the whole group, the whole group of towns that are in that currently. The, it would be somewhat close to about half the Lockton rate. So we're, we do have to negotiate, do some negotiations with the unions, both on the town and the school side. We believe that, you know, we can make progress as far as that's concerned, and that, at least as it stands right now, what we've budgeted is a realistic anticipation of where we could end up. So I just wanted to try to make that as clear as possible, at least at this stage of the So we've talked about the town government, we've talked about the Board of Education. Next up is Debt Service. And, you know, just to put some things in perspective, as of the end of this fiscal year, June 30th, 2018, the total amount of principal that we will owe for all of our debt service is a little bit under $20 million. You may recall that last year, it was in the range of $23 million. Of that share, almost $2 million of it is town, and about $18 million of it is Board of Education projects. For debt payments for fiscal year 19, we're proposing $4.4 million, which is, you know, about $312,000 less than current. That comes down to about $1 million for town government on the town side, and about $3 million on the Board of Education, $2.9. We have some miscellaneous administrative costs, $35,000. And what I'm calling Return to Debt Management Fund of $437. Our actual payment to debt service, on our debt service, will be less than $4.4 million. However, we're maintaining that $4.4 million level so that, so that we can absorb the road bond project, and the Wheeler School project, and high school project, and not going above the $4.4 million. And that's something that we have discussed at previous meetings. But that's the reason why I'm recommending that we use $300,000 added to Debt Management Plan, despite the fact that debt management, you know, the debt is dropping, because I know based upon the 4.4 that we'll be putting back into that debt management plan over the next year, about $400,000. So we'll be making it up, and that will allow us to absorb those future increases to debt service without going above the $4.4 million level, which is a plan that's been adopted by the council several years ago, and keeping in concert with that. And that's, goes to one of the points I made earlier, as far as goals are concerned, is looking out not just over the next year and trying to make this as low as possible, and then setting us up for, you know, harder times in the future. So. As far as the capital improvement plan is concerned, budget was $1.1 million this year from the general fund. I'm proposing that that be lowered, given our circumstances. As you heard during Superintendent Brummett's presentation, there certainly are some needs on the Board of Education side that are being deferred. There certainly are some needs on the town side that are being deferred as well. But I feel that, you know, unfortunately, given our, you know, our circumstances for this particular year, you know, it is what it is. And certainly, we'll be reviewing that with the council, you know, going forward as to what projects recommending and which projects, you know, didn't, at least didn't make the $800,000 cut, and I certainly would encourage the council to take a look at some of those projects that are not included, and I know you understand that they're not going to go away. With regards to the capital improvement plan, $800,000 is split between the town government and $575,000, and the Board of Education, about $225,000. On the general government side, you have basically five major projects. Police dispatch communication, which is a commitment that was made by the town four years ago, so we have our fifth year coming up. We're going to make some, we'd like to make some improvements to our computer-aided dispatch and records system. Fire department utility to replacement. There was actually another engine, engine number one that was scheduled for replacement this year, which has been deferred by one year. I've had some conversations with the chief with regards to that. And we have our economic, what we call our conservation, plan of conservation and development, which is and development, which is required every 10 years. And we're trying to do as much of it in-house as possible, but normally, I think 10 years ago when we did it, the cost of this was over 100,000 dollars. We're trying to do it for about half that cost by doing, by bringing some of it in-house. So, of the 800,000, a little bit more than half of it is, is those four projects that are in front of you. We have 11 other smaller projects that average about, about 16,000 dollars apiece. You saw earlier what the capital improvement plan recommendation is for the Board of Education, so I won't, I won't be repetitive as far as that's concerned. So, to summarize, the total proposed budget, a little bit over 60 million dollars, is a request of about 1.5 million dollars or 2.62%. If adopted as proposed, the mill rate increase would be 0.41 mills or a 1.24% increase in taxes, and that is based upon, on top of the supplemental increase that was approved by the council. So, we had a .75 mill increase that was approved back in December. This is on top of the point, on top of the .75 that was increased, and I'll show that on the next, next slide. But, but before I get to that slide, we'll get the mill rate calculation. It's, I won't go through all the particular numbers. We are, we are, we are, I will point out that we're projecting that we will, we will, the tax collection rate will be 97.4% of current taxes that are billed, and that based upon this budget, it would be a calculated mill rate of 33.84 mills. Next is the mill rate, mill rate change. The current mill rate, and that's with the supplemental, you know, the supplemental mill rate that was sent out supplemental tax bills, set the mill rate at 33.43. As you saw earlier, the proposed mill rate is 33.84, which is a .41 mill increase or 1.24% on top of what has already been paid in the current fiscal year. But I would like to point out that that doesn't really tell the whole story. For those residents who got a tax bill last July that was based on a 32.68 mill rate, the bill that they would get if this budget went through currently as proposed, would be a proposed mill rate of 33.84, which is a difference of 1.16 mills. And basically, it's a 3.5% increase in taxes. In terms of history, this has been our mill rate increase over the last five years, and I've added the sixth year, which is, which is in, all right, we'll call it green. The, the average increase over the last six, over the six years, which would include, you know, the supplemental tax as well as what's being proposed, the average increase in taxes over the last six years, including what's being proposed tonight, would average 1.53%. What does that mean to the average homeowner? I think we all consider ourselves somewhat average. But in Plainville, the average home value is about 175,000 dollars. We tax that per state statute at 70% of value or 122,500 dollars. In fiscal year 18, a person would have paid, based upon the 32.68 mill rate, a little bit over 4,000 dollars. At 33.84 mills, that would be a tax bill of 41.45. It's a difference of 142 dollars, or a little bit over 3.5%. Some would pay more, some would pay less, depending upon how you match up to the average. To see how that breaks down, based upon some of our factors that we've discussed as part of this budget, with the state aid decreasing by 610,000 dollars, that makes up about 41 dollars of the 142 dollar increase. The health insurance impact makes up a little bit less than 100 dollars of the impact of the total increase of 142 dollars. And all of the other line items together, including the Board of Education, the town, debt service, and capital projects, would make up about 5% of the, 5 dollars of the 142 dollars. So, just to put that in perspective, I think it's pretty easy to see what is driving the budget, what is causing a, a slightly over what we've seen in previous years. But I am proud of the fact that even with the budget as proposed, a 1.5% increase in taxes over six years, I think, is a, a pretty good record overall. I would like to point out that the, this, per our charter, it's required that there be a public hearing on the town manager's recommended budget. This public hearing is scheduled for next Thursday, March 8th, at 7:00 PM, here, right in this building, and right in this room. We do have workshops scheduled for Monday, April 11th, at 6:30 PM. Tuesday, April 12th, at 6:45 PM. We won't say why we made it 6:45, but still accommodate one of our members of the council. And this will, that evening will also include the review of the Board of Education budget. Where did we get the 13th? We said the 12th, right? Monday, is Monday the 11th?
No, it's 12th.
Okay, okay. Well, then, I got my dates wrong on here. So, Monday, the 12th, is the, is the first workshop. Tuesday, the 13th, at 6:45, this will include the review of the Board of Education budget. And Wednesday, the 14th, at 6:30. And then, we have the following Wednesday, I almost hate to say the date. I think it's the 21st, is it, is it 6:30? And Thursday, the 22nd, at 6:30. That's if needed. All meetings will be held in the Town Council chambers and are open to residents and/or other interested citizens. They will be taped by Nutmeg. And all these work sessions have been posted on the town website. So, for any reason you're confused about the dates that I gave you, and I can certainly understand why that might be the case this time, you can find them at www.plainvillect, all one word, plainvillect.com/calendar. So, so that's the summary of the budget. Again, there's certainly, the book is, you have in front of you. It's, it's got a lot of pages, a lot of detail. This summary was intended to give you a snapshot, and hopefully, at least a relatively, you know, high-level understanding of what's being proposed. And I look forward, and I know that we look forward, to working with the Town Council to, to monitor, you know, to come up with a budget that's acceptable to the council and hopefully, the voters as well. We will be, we will be monitoring the, what's happening at the state level. I did spend some time with, with our representative, Dr. Pettit, yesterday up at the Capitol. We did discuss, you know, the use of the legislature's recommended budget at this time. He thought that was a good idea, but, you know, we're just going to have to keep an eye on, on what's happening in Hartford, because that's certainly significantly impact us as we go forward as well. So, thank you again for, for your patience, and, and, you know, look forward to the public hearing next week. Unless you have any questions at this point in time, we just, you know, if there's any quick questions at the council, if not, we'll close it up.
Too soon.
Okay, good. All right, thank you. We are putting online the, the budget tomorrow, the, including the, the PowerPoint, so we'll have that on, you know, on the town website as well. So, all right, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Robert, and your staff, and Dr. Brummett, and your staff for coming this evening and giving us an overview of what we'll be working on. I appreciate all the, the effort that goes into this. It doesn't happen with just one or two people. It's a team effort, certainly, and this is developed over several months of looking at what we hope, we don't know, well, I won't say hope, but with what we know today in terms of what we're going to expect for revenues, that's what the council is going to be looking at. So, I appreciate all of the work and your due diligence getting us to this point. Now, it's our turn. So, thank you again. We do not have a public hearing scheduled for tonight, but our next item of business is approval of minutes of the previous meeting. May I have a motion?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to approve the minutes of February 5th, 2018, special and regular meeting, and February 20th, 2017, regular meeting.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Are there any corrections?
Should be 2018, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry?
It said 2017 here, but it really should be 2018.
Oh, 18, okay.
I'm correcting myself.
Thank you for pointing that out, okay. Are there any additions or corrections to these minutes? I would like to request that, and, and this is specific to the February 5th meeting minutes, if we can, after the, at the end of the minutes, Carol, I know that you're going to take care of all this, if we could insert a sentence there, and it would be something to this effect. Additional letters and emails received are available for review through the town manager's office. They are included in all the documentation of the, the trail project. The reason I ask for that sentence to be put in is there were folks that had submitted emails and letters to us requesting that they be actually read into the minutes during that process. We didn't do that. There were so many of them. But I know that we have all of that documentation. We've kept every single one of them. But I want anybody that goes to the minutes to be pointed to the town manager or who's ever keeping this packet of information, so they know if they want to go to see if their email or letter was actually part of this process, that's where they can find it. Thank you. Any other additions or corrections? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Any announcements or reports tonight?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Once again, I had the pleasure of giving a welcome from the town to the gymnastics competition of the Winter Olympics, Winter Games of the Special Olympics that were held in Plainville, again, last Sunday. This is the third year they've been at the Farmington Valley Gymnastics Facility on Northwest Drive, and it was a pleasure to do so. They had invited me back again, and a lot of enthusiastic athletes, families, and friends. It was a nice experience.
Great, thank you very much. Is there anything else? Anybody else have any announcements or reports? Okay, moving on. Appointments and reappointments to boards and commissions. We don't have any on the agenda. Are there any that we need to take care of?
I have some.
I'm sorry?
I have some. I have moved that we reappoint Dave Dudek, Dan Kulis, and Bill Brain to the Veterans Council for the term ending 3/1/2020.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion on the motion?
One brief comment I'd like to make. For all those who don't know, these are three veterans in our town. They're here every Monday night, even if it's a holiday, and they help veterans who have any problems or concerns. So, if you know anybody who needs any help, those guys are here every Monday, and they do a great job helping veterans.
And on top of that, they have a very good reputation, so that there's, they're referred by people from other communities to come and visit with our Veterans Committee, Veterans Council, and they're very dedicated and very knowledgeable about, about what's available to veterans for, to help them. I meet them, I meet people in the hallway all the time saying, where's the Veterans Council meeting? So, they do a good job.
Thank you. Any other comments regarding that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Are there any other appointments? Okay, moving on. Town attorney, all right, Robert, we are at your section of the meeting, so.
Yeah, just, just on a couple of items. One is the road bond bid, catch basins. You may recall at our last meeting, there was, there were several actions that were taken. This is an additional one. On February 22nd, the town received nine bid proposals for the construction, repairs, and adjustments of catch basins on various streets as part of the road bond program. The low bid was provided by Jones Construction of Unionville in the amount of 38,800 dollars. References have been checked, and town staff is recommending that Jones Construction be awarded the bid in the amount of 38,800 dollars. And there is an item under new business regarding this recommendation. In addition, we have a tax fixing agreement, Six Mile Holdings LLC. This tax fixing agreement involves one of two buildings to be constructed on Robert Jackson Way. This building totals 8,000 square feet. You may recall that last August, the Town Council approved what we call a memorandum of understanding regarding the tax fixing agreement. Six Mile Holdings LLC is now looking to move forward with the project now that their plans have been approved. The estimated cost in a new building is 1.2 million dollars, and this will allow them to attract two new businesses to Plainville from Rocky Hill. Second building, consisting of an additional 12,000 square feet, is expected to go forward after this first building is finished. However, this item only involves the first building. There is an item under new business regarding the tax fixing agreement with Six Mile Holdings LLC. The only other thing I'd mention is that Leonard Engineering just released, or actually, the New Britain, City of New Britain, just released a, a study with regards to the proposed quarry expansion and future water storage reservoir in Plainville. Basically, the Tilkon, you know, expansion discussion. This, this was just, I believe it was just released yesterday or the day before. It is now posted on the New Britain webpage. So, if you go to the New Britain webpage, there's a link to it. I did send a link to the council in your emails, and I did provide you at least a copy of the executive session. I think the whole, the whole report is 400-plus pages. We figured that executive summary is good in hard copy, and the rest of it is via link. So, anyhow, with that, that's all I have to report. I'd like to turn it over to Scott for happenings, and then if you have any questions or comments for us, we certainly will try to address them.
Good evening. I just have a few items. The first is a reminder that the transfer station on Granger Lane will be open for the season on Saturday, April 7th, 2018. The hours of operation will be from 8:00 AM to 3:00 PM, Saturdays only. And this is for Plainville residents. They must show identification when they arrive. And there are some fees for disposal, depending upon the items that you're trying to discard. This information can be found on the Public Works website on the town's webpage. If you have any other questions, please feel free to call Public Works at 860-793-0221, extension 208. And the other item I have is regarding bulk pickup. The town of Plainville has an on-demand policy for the collection of bulk pickup items. Residents who currently have curbside rubbish and recycling collection from the town can request one bulk pickup per calendar year, free of charge, for large, large items that do not fit in the normal rubbish collection. For a list of the acceptable items, that can also be found on the Public Works website. For property owners, they will be able to schedule their one bulk pickup, free of charge, either in the spring or in the fall. And the dates that we have are Mondays, April 9th through June 25th. And in the fall, the collection will be from, on Monday, September 10th through Monday, October 29th, and this will exclude Memorial Day. And when calling CWPM, you'll need to leave the following information on their answering machine, their name, their address, the phone number, and a complete description of the items that will be collected. Calls placed by 3:00 PM Friday can be scheduled for a collection on Monday. And for pickups at multifamily units, they ask that the property owners or landlords make the call for the pickup. And the number that the residents should call for CWPM is 860-793-6721. And that's all I have to report.
Thank you very much. Does anybody have any questions for Robert or Scott with their report?
One question, not necessarily off your report. Before the budget work sessions start, would it be possible to get a list of all the back taxes that are owed to town, including any, or highlighting any of those that are technically subject to review based on our ordinance change?
The ordinance change?
On the, on the dollar amount, those that go to, those that go to auction.
Okay, yeah, okay. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else have anything? Okay, thank you both.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Moving on to our public comments section, I do not have a sign-up sheet here tonight, so I will just open it to whomever wishes to speak to the council. Please come to either, to that podium, state your name and address. You'll be given one opportunity to speak to the council for three minutes. Does anybody wish to speak to the council? Okay, guys. Point, point, point. You're going first, Mr. Frangos.
Just some quick ones. I heard when you were talking earlier, this February 5th... I heard when you were talking earlier, this February 5th town council meeting, has that meeting been approved? The town council?
The minutes?
All right.
We just approved them.
It was approved?
Yeah.
Okay. Now, if there's any questions regarding what was approved, I have to contact the town manager's office and not the town council?
Yes, that would probably, well, you can, you can always call us, Lou, you know that, but to get some, some questions answered specifically, that might be a better starting point. I'll leave it up to you.
Well, the reason I'm pointing in this direction is a few people approved it. That's where I want my answer to come from.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, now, just a couple of quick ones for general information, and all pertains to the Gap Trail. The length of time, just, do we know what time from start to finish from planning to final construction, how long the duration will be?
I, I don't know, because we've just approved the concept, so it has to go to design, and then it has to be engineered. And of course, in between all that, we need to find the money for this as well. You know, I mean, that also has to take place. So I'm going to say it's going to take some time. I will say a year, and maybe longer. That might be the more likely answer.
You may have heard something already, Madam Chair. My second question, length of time. Are we going to have, like, and I'm basing this, like, on the Wheeler School. We have the Capitol Building Project, Project Team, and you can attend these meetings. Will there be a similar type of watchdog team that holds meetings that residents can attain, attend to see how the trail is progressing, as they're doing now with the Wheeler School?
I would say to you that, in terms of what's going to happen at the, the design phase with the state DOT and whomever is going to do that, I'm not sure how they run their meetings. But if that information comes back to the town, and we feel it's important to share that, of course.
Okay, so this is strictly a state, total state. It's not like what we're doing here in Plainville with Wheeler School. This is state, period.
Correct.
Okay, that answers the question.
And the, and the design team that you've been seeing here a long time. Right.
Now, next question, I'm trying to go as quick as I can because of my time limit. The funding, as in the case of the Wheeler School, because we want to show the state we're still into the project, we continue to fund different things, whatever constructions taking place, et cetera, et cetera. Am I right, am I wrong? Of course, I'm right.
I'm not, can you, can you say that again?
We, through the Capitol Building Projects meetings, the architect will bring in plans, ONG, the construction people are bringing in plans, these things, they go out for bids. We're already putting money into that system. In fact, in excess of $500,000.
There have been some disbursements made that, to keep this project moving forward.
Yes, ma'am.
Correct. I don't know if there's going to be more.
Okay, no, my, and that's the way it's established. My only question is, will there be a similar type, because you mentioned something about money. Will any money coming, be coming out of Plainville?
For the trail?
For the trail.
No.
No, so there's no involvement financially?
No.
Thank you. And as far as the construction, everything will be, and I just want to make sure this is clear, because it's hard to believe, everything pertaining to this trail will be totally locked into the state, period. The only time we'll take over this is once it's built, and we maintain, we have the maintenance of the trail, et cetera, et cetera.
We will be in the, we will be kept in this process the whole way along. You know, when the design is, is whatever comes up with, we're going to look at that. If the council doesn't like a part of it, or they have questions about it, we are going to be involved in it all the way along, the way. We are not just saying, "Okay, it's your turn now, and then that's the end of it for our involvement." No.
Okay, no, naturally, that we're going to say, "Yes, we like the plan," or "We don't like whatever you're presenting." I, I understand that part. I just want to know, once they, Plainville turns around and says, "Yes, we approve it." Okay, whatever the state decided to do. They then, in turn, bring in construction or whatever else is needed to make it happen. Do I have that right?
Kathy, I, you know, this is, that will all be forthcoming. We, we don't have the answers to those questions at this point in time, okay? We have to work things out with the state. When the funding comes forward, we will determine how it's going to be managed and, and those types of things. So we can't really answer those questions this evening.
Thank you very much.
Does anybody else wish to speak to the council? John?
John Kislick, 65 Forestville Avenue. I didn't even notice it was going to be a town council meeting. I thought it was just going to be the presentation. So I didn't dress for it.
Glad you're here.
I have a couple of things. First of all, Councilwoman Maranti was the only one who answered my question from the council. I guess the rest, you feel, I'm not worthy of a response, so, thank you. Thank you, Rosemary. I have a few things. On the budget presentation, with the health, health fund increase that's going to be absorbed in this budget, is the council still going to be approving these extra $500 million payments every once in a while out of our fund? Is that in addition to this, or is this fund, the new budget, going to take care of that? Do you know?
This is, the, the amount that you saw tonight is the budget for next year, beginning 2019.
Right.
Regarding the current insurance fund, there, there still will have to be some money put toward that.
Okay, so you're going to still be making payments?
That's correct, yep.
Okay. I'm going to put my glasses on. The trail again, too. Just one fast thing. If that trail goes down Broad Street, I'm wondering what's going to happen when you hit Washington Street and South Washington Street. It's just something I want you to think about. Taxes, when you had the .75 increase, you didn't tax every vehicle. You didn't tax things that were lower, I guess, a certain amount. You know, why, why did you do that? You're saying it's not cost efficient, but I would guess with the amount of them, if you added them all together, you would have come out ahead. I don't think that's fair to the people who might have had a $5 bill or $6 bill. I have three vehicles, and none of them are taxed. So I'm not one that's complaining because I didn't get beat out. But I just don't see that as being fair. I think you still should have done that, and I think in the long run, overall, you wouldn't have lost money. I think you would have still came out ahead, maybe a couple thousand, who knows? I don't know how many vehicles are in my case, but it's just a point I wanted to make to this council. It's not fair to a person who paid five or six dollars. I, I have a friend who, one vehicle paid the tax of, I think, $9, and the other one That's about all I have. I mean, I listened to this budget, and, and I'm kind of happy with what I heard, but there's always some room, so I'm hoping that you people can...
Did you say you're happy with this?
No, really, for, for what we're up against, but...
You made our job much easier, John.
Yeah, but the thing is, that's why I asked that other part, that you're still going to be taking, you know, what, another million and a half, maybe, out of our undesignated fund balance? That, that part makes me unhappy. But, you know, if that didn't have to happen, I think most people would be happy with what we're talking about.
Well, clearly, you know, nobody, nobody's happy about the situation that this, that has transpired here, in terms of what we have to do to, to take care of our, our health insurance account. There's no happiness, but it is our responsibility to take care of that, and we will take care of that, because that's what we have, we're obligated to that, and we'll take care of it. We are looking, as, as Mr. Lee said, we are looking at joining another type of insurance plan, which is a consortium of other towns. We have been advised that there are potentially very good savings for us if we can do this, and if we can get everybody that's going to be involved to agree to it. So we are taking steps to try and address this, but right now, we, we are obligated to those, those expenses, and we are going to take care of them.
I know, I know you're looking at other plans. I talked to you before, and I talked to Board of Ed tonight. And Mr. Lee did explain that to me, that it didn't quite work the way my plan worked. I was, you know, just, it, it didn't make sense to me, but I didn't realize what the town is doing with that plan. And that's why, I guess, that plan is turning out not to be so good for us. Thank you.
Okay. Does anybody else wish to speak to the council? Marilyn.
Good evening, council members and residents of the community. I'm Marilyn Sharet, 18 Milford Street in Plainville. And I wasn't quite prepared for tonight either. I was going to save it for next time we had what I thought was going to be an open meeting for us to be able to speak. First thing I wanted to say is I was really kind of disappointed in all of you for really not hearing what I thought was the people's voice. And I have a question for you. I want to know, when you listened to everybody, were you taking those numbers from the people from out of town into consideration as well? And I also want to know, who invited all of these people from out of town? And were their numbers included when you made your final decision? How many people were for, and how many people were against? Were you including the people that were from out of town?
Well, I can tell you this, Marilyn, and I'm going to speak for myself, because everybody up here listened to the same information I did.
Sure.
And they can certainly offer their opinion. They also received a lot of email, both for and against.
Yep.
A lot of the against people that we received in our email were from out of town. So if we're going to look at the out-of-towners in a special light, it's going to have to be with everybody included in that batch, not just the ones that were for it.
I understand.
We got a lot of people from out of town that were against the trail. I'm not sure how much they knew about the trail. I'm not sure how much study they did on the trail, but they were against the trail. So, having said that, we did look at both for and against. We listened to that. We've also done more than just that in terms of learning about the trail. We have all walked the trail.
Mm-hmm.
Not just looked at a map, but we've gone out and actually looked at the neighborhoods where they're going through, so we can get a real flavor for what people were concerned with. We got a flavor for what it would potentially look like. So there was more than just one meeting. It's more than just emails and public hearings. There was a lot of additional information that every one of the people up here, I'm sure, took into consideration. So, for and against went both ways.
Okay.
Marilyn, can I add to that?
Yeah.
Because in addition to what, what's already been said, not just, you know, the people who spoke at the public hearing, whether they were from in-town or out of town, walking the trail, talking to people who live on the streets that are, that are going to be affected, but I talked to countless people in Nazo's, in the bank, you know, just all over town. It's a topic that a lot of people wanted to talk about. Between that and the dog park, there, there's been a lot of discussion just in everyday life. It's not just, I think that takes some of the weight off of the information that it looks like we may have gotten at the public hearing, because all the people that I talked to in the bank and at Nazo's, et cetera, those were all Plainville people.
Okay. But part of my question wasn't answered. I want to know how these people from out of town came to a Plainville meeting? Who invited them, or emailed them that there was going to be a Plainville council, a town council meeting?
Well, our public hearings are posted, and, and so anybody that has been involved in following this project has been paying attention. So whether they're in Plainville or live here specifically, or they're from out of town, they've been following it, and they've been keeping track of things.
Were they invited by either Tim Malone, the town manager, or the town council? That's my question.
Invited?
Yes.
Specifically invited?
Yes.
No, no. General information was out there regarding this trail, about all of the meetings and the hearings that we've had.
So they were...
I did not go out of my way to invite people from out of town to come into Plainville and either advocate for the trail or oppose it. I didn't do that.
Okay.
There's no special effort made.
Okay. Well, I do know that Mr. Malone did collect names, addresses, and phone numbers, as well as email addresses. And that was part of my question. I feel as though, you know, it's a valid one. Let me just check my notes real quick. I did speak to at least two previous council members who had serious concerns about this trail going down Broad Street. And I, for one, I find that that, especially as John Kislick just brought up, going across North and South Washington, Washington Street, okay, over to the other side, down towards Norton Park.
Anyway.
But, anyway, that being said, I hope that there's some room for latitude in your decision. I hope you think about it a little bit more carefully, and I know that there's, there's a serious concern on everybody's part. We're talking about having to move things in our budget down the road two or three years, kicking the can, so to speak, and, and financially. And I don't see anything changing in a year's time with our state, not with the state that we're in, but...
Probably not.
That being said, you know, I hope you all keep an open mind to the serious concerns that these, and I understand what you're saying. You talked to a lot of people, but I did too. And the people that I spoke to had very serious issues. So keep that in mind, okay?
Thank you.
And if possible, if it's necessary, bring it to a referendum to the people.
Does anybody else wish to speak to the council that hasn't spoken yet? Anybody else? Last chance. Okay, thank you for your comments. We'll move on to the next portion of our meeting. We have no old business, so on to our new business. May I have a motion for number one, please?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to award bid number 2018-13E, construction repairs and adjustments of catch basins on various streets to Jones Construction LLC, Unionville, Connecticut, in the amount of $38,800.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Number two.
Motion to approve and authorize the town manager to execute the tax assessment fixing agreement for 35 Robert Jackson Way, Building A for Six Mile Holdings LLC, as recommended by the Economic Development Agency.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Number three.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to approve the tax refunds as listed on the revised addendum.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, I think that's it. Let me just make sure if there's nothing else going on here. Robert, do you have anything else for us?
No, I do not, thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
May I make a comment?
Surely.
In regards to the, some of the comments I've heard about, the council didn't listen. I want to say I'm dismayed, because I don't feel some of the opposition listened to us. I made the motion to approve that trail plan at the last meeting. Before I was done making my comments, the opposition had left the room. So for someone to say to me, "I didn't listen," I think you have to look at yourself and say, "Did I listen to what his reasoning was?" I've heard about Broad Street. I, I motioned to move this plan forward because I wanted to get an opinion of the experts, how we handle Broad Street, how we handle Washington Street. Is there funding available? How we build safe buffer zones in the neighborhoods? So, I've talked to a lot of people like Councilman Saunders and many of the rest of us, and I listened to their concerns. I've tried to address their concerns with my own opinion. But for those of you who got up and left before we were done speaking at the last meeting, I would welcome you to come and speak with me as to why I made the motion and supported moving forward in this project. Thank you.
Thank you.
I didn't say everyone. I said a good portion of the opposition.[1738.21]